On our agenda, the public hearing for the proposed 2020 budget. We have had several different community input meetings and city council meetings. I'm sorry, not community input meetings, but city council meetings and information opportunities. And tonight is the public hearing for the 2020 budget. So this is an opportunity from folks within the audience to come forward and speak their mind about the budget, speak for or against any proposed items that they may see within our budget that is before us. And as always, if you would, name and affiliation or address for the record.
My name is Aaron Moss. I'm the president of the Fraternal Order of Police, Service Valley Regional Lodge Number Seven. Just a little background on our organization. We are the largest law enforcement officer representation organization in the country with about 347,000 members, gaining 30,000 in the last year. We are one of 2,200 lodges with about 150 law enforcement officers, correctional officers, dispatchers from federal, state, county, and city agencies throughout the region, 50 of which are employed right here at the City of Minot. I speak tonight in support of the budget submitted by Council President Janser in the last meeting. As it's written, we believe this budget recognizes the highest priorities and responsibilities to the public that you and we serve, specifically funding priorities in public safety and critical infrastructure, and then economic development, in that order. For our membership, this chiefly evident in a fully funded pay plan for the city staff. Continuing this funding priority as it was in the last budget shows this council's commitment to retaining trained and experienced staff. And in doing so, that helps ensure a continuity of service when it comes to policing services to this community. While we always believe there's additional room for improvement, we are pleased with this pay plan and shows respect for the efforts our members put forth when others have been less so in history. So this dedication by protecting your staff's pay and benefits directly impacts worker satisfaction and in turn improves retention, which has been a stated goal over the past couple of budget cycles. And we recognize and appreciate your efforts in that regard. We're particularly impressed with this budget's ability to fund critical projects and public safety priorities with the projected spending increases without a property tax increase or more importantly, a decrease in benefits to our members' benefits packages. So this is a testament to this body's commitment to strong advocacy for the Magic City and when seeking critical funding from other available resources. So we'll just close by thanking you for your time and encourage a yes vote on the proposed budget. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Any questions? The officer tonight?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Good to see some of our men and women in blue as well here. Shields, I will say that I just, in somewhat related, we've spent some time at Minot Central Campus here recently where we did have a little increase in our presence within the Minot Police Department. I was happy to see that so many of the officers were there and the kids' minds were put at ease because of the presence there. So thank you. At this time, I would encourage anyone else to come forward for any other statements or questions within our proposed 2020 budget.
My name is Mike Ensland, 1714 Fifth Avenue, Southwest Minot. I guess I'm representing the silent majority of the taxpayers in Minot. My taxes in the last two years have went up approximately 48%. And what I'm trying to let you council members know is that the majority of people in this town are up to here with taxes. People are moving out. My neighbor's selling his house because he can't afford the taxes anymore. And I live in the flood zone, some of you do maybe. And not only do we have to pay our insurance on our house, we have to pay flood insurance, which is going up every year. So what I'm asking you is that I know this 2020 budget's probably going to pass tonight and there's probably nothing that any of the taxpayers can do, but there's a lot of people in town, the vast majority I talked to, think that Minot should tighten their belts. See where you can find places to cut spending and not increase spending by buying things that you don't necessarily need, but you want. I'd like to buy things that I want to, but I can only afford to buy things I need. So I'm asking you from the taxpayers of Minot to consider that in your discussions in the future about the budget. I'm sure there's nothing going to be done tonight but a vote of yes on the budget. So I'm looking for the future. Maybe my taxes won't go up again, but in two years, 48% is a lot of money. So I appreciate you guys looking into that and taking that into consideration. And I want to thank these police officers for all their things. And I think maybe the police officers should be increased because this isn't Sleepy Hollow anymore. So I think maybe we should get some more Manning that they deserve. And I thank you guys from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Mr. Ensland.
Questions for me? I'm sorry.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I will again extend the opportunity for folks to come forward and ask questions or make comments as well for the proposed 2020 budget. I'm sitting patiently. I will ask one more time before I look to the council. Any further comments on the proposed 2020 budget? If not, I would look to the council for a motion. Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the budget ordinance on first reading.
Can we first start with closing the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, close the public hearing and adopt the budget.
Motion by Alderman Janser, second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Wolski.
Yeah, I've got a couple amendments that I'm going to introduce here, but before I get into that, I would request Mr. Lakefield come up. There's a line on page 85 where I think we discovered some new information maybe in the last couple of days, and I want to get an update on Hub City funding that we're still expecting for yet in 2019. Not directly attached to this particular budget, but revenue that may have a bearing on it.
Good evening, Mr. Lakefield. I think we are looking at page 85 of our budget.
And for reference, I am looking at the economic development line, which is 122,000. And I'm also looking at the transfer to the general fund, which is 177,000 roughly. They're towards the top in the economic development.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that money is money that the council has set aside for City of Minot economic development efforts. The anticipation is, and the city is currently working with a recruiting firm to fill that position that was authorized in the 2019 budget. The general fund transfer is the transfer to the planning and community development department to cover the salary, benefits, equipment, and any expenses associated with that position. The remainder that is still in economic development, the 122, 330, is the seed money for the city's revolving loan fund that was approved last year.
Okay. I appreciate that explanation, Mr. Lakefield. I guess the seed money for the revolving loan fund was new to me. It was my assumption that that was the second half of the 250,000 that had been allocated last year for the economic development. Because according to this particular budget here, what we're showing is that the 250,000 we allocated last year for the economic development position didn't make it into this version.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Wolski, and I should back up a little bit. The remainder of the money is for the city's economic development efforts. And one of the things that was anticipated with that was the development of a nonprofit with a revolving loan fund. So that was one of the activities that was discussed. And you're correct, in our discussions earlier, this was something that was brought as an amendment in last year's budget process. And with all the changes that took place, it was overlooked in the final adoption of the budget. So what had happened is when that was discovered after the adoption of the budget, we brought forth a budget amendment to correct that in the 2019 budget. That's why it doesn't show up in the comparables here. It was included as an ongoing appropriation in this year's budget. However, like our discussions that we had the other day, Alderman Wolski, this is the appropriation to spend that money in this year. So for example, in the 2019 appropriation, if that money is not expended by the end of the year, that will revert back into the fund balance for economic development. And that appropriation will expire, for lack of a better term, unless there's some mechanism to encumber those funds, like a contract that is in place or something like that. It would remain in fund balance, so it would be available to be appropriated in future years for that purpose.
And then, Dave, a quick update on Hub City revenue that we expect potentially in 2019. Again, estimates as best we can provide them.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Wolski, I think in some of the conversations that we've had earlier in the year, the estimate for the 2020 budget cycle is about a $3 million increase in Hub City funding. And I think the initial assumption was that that went into effect in July 1, so we would see essentially half of that amount in the 2019 budget that was not budgeted for. However, due to the delays in how that tax money is paid through to us, we haven't seen any of that increased funding yet. We're anticipating that that would actually come online here later in September when we get the September payment. So, you know, if we do the math, half of 3 million, we would have expected 1.5 million in 2019. It's probably going to be more in the order of like 900,000 because we'll only collect that increased funding for four of the six months.
One more follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please continue.
Mr. Lakefield, in our discussions on Friday, you also mentioned that out of this particular 2020 budget, approximately 150,000 of that 900 is lightly earmarked towards some capital improvement projects. Is that roughly correct? If I didn't get the exact earmark right, it's about 150,000. I think we talked about being encumbered.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Wolski, I think I've lost track of you here because what we have, what we had budgeted originally in 2019 has been accounted for, the additional money. I think we're expecting, okay, I'm doing the math here, I think we're expecting a total of about 6.28 million. And we're budgeting to spend 6.43 million. So yeah, that would be in anticipation of having some fund balance. Now, we have some money typically that, you know, we budget on a forecast and we try to get that as close as we can, but we obviously don't want to overshoot our expectations. So typically, we do have a little bit of money at the end of the year that has not been appropriated, that is available for appropriation in the following year.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Wolski.
Yep, I just kind of wanted to help establish a couple sources of funds there.
And Alderman Strait here in just a moment, just for the audience both here and at home. Also with the Hub City funding, this is essentially a forecast model, as Mr. Lakefield had indicated, based on an approximation, if I'm not mistaken, of $55 a barrel for sweet crude on how this was drawn up in the state legislature and $52.50. And anything below that would actually affect our revenue source coming in. Anything above that would obviously also affect it on the other side. So this is, I think, at our best guess based on legislative models, on dollars that we would anticipate. But clearly, this is impacted by the economics within the production here in North Dakota. So Alderman Strait.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, while you're up there, can you, I want to talk a little bit about NOS since that's one of the largest projects that we have to fund. Can you remind the public of how much money we currently have in reserves that we've been accumulating over the last number of years while NOS has been tied up in lawsuits?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Strait, off the top of my head, I think we're sitting on about $18 million that we have on hand or that we expect to collect. We are anticipating that we are going to be short going forward. That is why we had implemented or reallocated some of the second penny sales tax towards NOS here, I believe it was last year. And we're anticipating it's going to take four to five more years of collections to get enough money built up. I think we're estimating about $45 million total to complete it, so somewhere around four to five years.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to follow up, Dave, because I had a conversation with Mr. Bob Shemp last week, and I believe he maybe had spoken with you and also with city manager Barry. And I've kind of looked at the numbers that he has conveyed, and it's just to be clear because sometimes I think we talk about these numbers so much I get confused. The Biota plant that's going to need to be funded is going to be paid for by the state and reimbursed by the federal government. So our local share is not going to go towards that project, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Strait, that is the assumption at this point.
Okay. And I know that we have these assumptions because we have to look at our numbers, but what concerns me a little bit is I think we have a difference in what the need is for the project in relation, there's an idea that we might only need up to 25 to 30 million compared to what you're saying in terms of 40 million. And I think as we move forward, because we have to reallocate this portion of the second penny back to it, it's city manager Barry, I think it's going to be very important that we keep the public updated on this because I think that those dollars, the public is very interested to know when we're going to take care of the obligation, but when that fund is going to revert back to that second penny. And so when we talk about two and a half to four years in that difference, it's very important to the public because as the gentleman said prior, you know, we have to be very mindful of all the funds in terms of the property taxes. And so I think this is an important piece that I want us to be very alert to.
Thank you, Alderman Strait. City manager Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Strait, I think it's absolutely important what you've just said. Just for clarification, the 42, roughly 43 million dollars that's needed to finish the project is inclusive of the 18 million or so that we have in reserves already. So that's where you get to the $25 million difference of additional funds needed. And that backs into essentially the projection of about 4 million per year for the next five, four, five years or so. All that math is kind of what we're running in the background to ensure that by the 2022, 2023 timeframe, we're essentially done with having to raise money through sales taxes for NOS. And what's nice about that is that frees that money up for other things, whether it be flood control or something else the council should choose to decide to finance with that funding at that time.
Further questions for our city finance director as he is at the podium? Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. Further discussion on the proposed 2020 budget from the Alderman. Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sim, thank you. Like I said, I wanted to call Mr. Lakefield up to get kind of a sense of where a couple lines are at based on past actions of the council. And that explanation is directly related to an amendment I'm going to offer, but if we look at these two lines in economic development, 465.12-00 for 122,000 and 491.300, transfer the general fund for 177,000, and then we subtract out $50,000, which we typically transfer the same as we would have done in 2019 to the general fund. We have that $250,000 that we allocated last year. And so the economic development position is being collected here in 2019. And what we have here, in essence, is a second $250,000 allocation. I don't know to what degree the council wants to continue advancing that $250,000 on an annual basis, but I'm going to offer an amendment here to continue that reappropriation to economic development, but I'm going to give it a bit of a more, or I'm going to offer a bit more specific earmark. So with that in mind, I would offer to amend the 2020 budget by reducing lines 491.30-00 and 465.12-00 each to $50,000. So we go from the current earmark down to $50,000. The second part of this would be that we appropriate $200,000 in a new line to the Downtown Business and Professional Association. The fourth part of this, or the third part, I guess, I wrote those two lines a little separately, would be to take our $2,019 that we have been collecting this year and encumber them to the economic development position that we have previously authorized. So I offer that amendment.
We have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'll second for the discussion.
Second by Alderman Strait. Alderman Wolski.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, this is $250,000 that we are setting aside for economic development. I feel like with the $250,000 we allocated last year, we have secured approximately three years of funding for our economic development specialist. I think we have an identified need in downtown through both the work of the IEDC report. We have a recently completed downtown strategy plan that has identified a needed capacity in the downtown area. The downtown association simply doesn't have the means right now to fund a full-time employee. I believe we also all got a request from the Downtown Business Association suggesting that this is a identified need of theirs. They have made a formal request to the council and the mayor on this behalf. And then I would also point out the fact that over the past five years, I think we have, as a city, have invested between 25 and 30 million on infrastructure. We are proposing another significant investment on the gathering space. We are proposing another very significant investment on Third Street. There are other downtown-related infrastructure projects in the works. With the considerable amount of money we're spending on infrastructure, I think it would also be prudent to support that area of town with some professional staff. And I think the Downtown Professional Association is the right vehicle to deliver that.
Further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? Alderman Strait.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Alderman Wolski's sentiment. I differ a little bit in terms of the funding mechanism of, or maybe it's just the dollar amount. I think that we've had some additional organizations that have stepped up. Visit Minot comes to mind bringing forth the One Brand Campaign as well as Service Base and Planning Council. And so I would cordially like to ask my friend across the aisle if he could reconsider and possibly reapportion funds to these additional organizations that have also been leaning in and doing some more work.
Further discussion? Alderman Janser.
Like Alderman Strait, I appreciate the sentiment involved in this amendment. However, I am not tonight convinced that this is a prudent expenditure given the, you know, current structure of the organization. And, you know, I have not seen enough of a plan of how this money, and if it's spent on a salary, how that individual is going to produce the results that we're probably all looking for. So I'm not prepared to support this tonight.
I think on my perspective of this, having a discussion actually with the president of the Downtown Business Association from today, looking at exactly the information that was emailed to us, this does differ from their request in many other of the requests, whether it be from grants or other organizations that have looked for funding. With this, we would, if we're allocating at this point, there is no contract, there is no deliverables, no benchmarks to be received, as well as matching funds in this circumstance. Did go into quite a bit of detail with the president from the Downtown Business Association of steps to move forward in potential requests. I look at this, at this point, as premature. We would have the ability down the road to have, I think, a full and more in-depth discussion on some potential opportunities down the road, but I won't support the amendment tonight. City Finance Director.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that if the transfer to general fund was reduced or eliminated, that would eliminate the funding for the city economic development position that would be in the planning and community development department. So if this appropriation, if that line item is reduced from the 2020 budget, there would not be an appropriation to fund that position in 2020. What would be possibly more appropriate would be to take that money from the fund reserves and appropriate it for spending. Otherwise, we are going to potentially hire this person here in the fourth quarter of 2019 and then not have the money appropriated to maintain that position in 2020.
Further discussion? Alderman Wolski.
Mr. Mayor, just as an explanation, that was the, essentially the final part of this motion was that we take the $2,019 that we have collected and encumber them towards that particular purpose. So it would essentially just be a budget year swap that was proposed because we have collected the 250, or in the process of collecting the initial 250,000 in this year's budget, which we did decide to do last year at this time.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Wolski, the more appropriate way to approach this would be to increase the appropriation for the 2020 budget utilizing reserves that we were anticipating from the 2019. We have to have the amount appropriated in the budget to be able to spend those dollars. So if we reduce one and move that money in the 2020 budget, we have to cut that spending. We are not able to encumber those unspent dollars because we don't have a contract. It's an ongoing appropriation. So we would have to come back and budget that money again in the future. So essentially, what we would, to accommodate that, what we would want to do is use those reserve dollars and increase the appropriation to accommodate that position.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up here.
Just for a quick clarification, prior to, please, Mr. Wolski, and we cannot increase the mill levy at this point, correct? We would have to draw it down from somewhere else, out of a reserve allocation from another line item, out of here tonight, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Thank you. Alderman Wolski.
Sure. So the spirit of this motion is fairly clear. Were it to be successful tonight, would this be able to be addressed through a budget amendment at a later date to more appropriately capture the will of the motion as well as the legal accounting?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Wolski, that's always a possibility that that can be done in the future. Right now, it is eliminating the funding for that position. And I'm just thinking ahead to our recruitment efforts, it's been a difficult position to fill and probably will be very difficult to fill that position if we don't have the money appropriated in the 2020 budget. So I think that's a risk that we have. I think we're at a crossroads here where we have to make a decision if we're going to be committed to that position for the fourth quarter of 2019 and in the 2020 appropriation as well. But it is always possible that that could be accomplished through a budget amendment.
Alderman Strait.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Dave's statement because I think the public, and I've been waiting anxiously to see if somebody was going to fill this position because increasingly, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we are going to hire someone. And I mean no disrespect to any of our staff, especially the people in uniform here tonight, but when we are looking at the pay plan increases that we are probably going to approve this evening, putting another staff member that would also then be earning those benefits without having that position lined out in terms of what those deliverables are back to the public, I have great concern. And so as a result, I think if we don't fill that position soon, we should consider a budget amendment to reallocate those funds and maybe let the private sector do the work and allow the city, just around the city staff, without some of the economic development pieces.
Clarification on our current situation. The city manager and staff and I did meet with a consultant this past week, as well as other members from the community, including the Chamber of Commerce and MADC as well, to draw up more definitives on exactly what this person is looking like. It would be exceptionally premature to already pull the plug on this when we really haven't even gotten out of the gates on looking as we are continuing down this process from our initial get-go in 2019. our initial get-go in 2019. Further questions for Mr. Lakefield regarding this amendment, motion to amend. Further comments. Alderman Wolski.
Mr. Mayor, I'll speak to just a couple of things that have come out in the discussion here. So first of all, this is not a motion to pull the plug on the economic development position. This is simply an acknowledgement that the dollars are there in 2019. I would fully accept that we have to appropriate them in 2020, but I have offered a motion which has, I would say, intent to honor last year's commitment and honor funding the position of the IEDs, of the internal economic developer, but also to, for 2020, take the next step, which is advance the interests and the other goals that have been identified over the last year and a half and through the IEDC work. I would also suggest that, yes, this is indeed a different funding vehicle than what was proposed by the Downtown Association. That was at my own interest, because frankly, I thought the economic development dollars out of sales tax were more appropriate than the HUD City Funding. I do realize that, obviously, there are details yet to be worked out, but this is not an award of dollars. We are not writing a check. We are appropriating dollars with intent to be used. My expectation would be that the fact that if this were successful, the work would get started very quickly on writing the terms of that contract, on writing the expectations of the city, on making the agreement. You know, we do this on a number of times with other particular organizations, and I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel here. I think this is just a signal of our intent to continue the work in the downtown arena, and I think it's appropriate to make the commitment. The Downtown Association did suggest that this was over three years. That would be my intent, too. We're appropriating it all, but we've, but I think it could easily be earmarked and held until such time when the Downtown Association had fulfilled some of those commitments.
We recently went through an excessive exercise with Visit Minot for the allocation of Magic Fund dollars, with contracts, deliverables, and many benchmarks. I feel very uncomfortable at this point, looking at this as merely premature. I think a deeper discussion has to be held. It's not that I disagree that there's potential down the road, but given the nature of just an allocation without any of this, there are many different ways to address this in even the near term. But I think we need to have a deeper discussion with the president of the Downtown Business Professionals, prior to allocating a significant amount of money. Further discussion. Last chance, further discussion. This is a motion to amend, and I suppose I could read this into great detail.
He probably will be better at it.
Alderman Wolski.
I'll capture it. It's to change the two lines previously mentioned, reduce them to $50,000 apiece, and appropriate $200,000 to the DBPA, and encumber the 2019 funds for the economic development position that we created last year.
Are we clear on the motion to amend? If we are, please call the roll.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padraig O'Leary?
No.
Straight?
Yes.
Motion fails. Further discussion.
Yes.
Alderman Wolski.
Mr. Mayor, another brief amendment here. We'll stick on the same line, 465.12-00, economic development. That's $122,330. I would move that we reduce that by $3,000 and add an earmark for Renaissance Zone Marketing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to transfer $3,000 out of the line that is 491.32-11 from 12230, subtracting $3 and adding an additional line for Renaissance Zone Marketing. Alderman Wolski, if you would, just elaborate on...
Sure.
Details.
I am a member of the Renaissance Zone. We have been going through the redevelopment of our larger guiding document, which is our development plan. One of the elements in that plan that has been discovered is that the Renaissance Zone has a responsibility to market the zone, but we do not have an appropriation to do that. So what exists, in essence, is an unfunded mandate. We are asked to do this particular action, but we have no resources to do it. So this has been discovered over the past year. I thought it appropriate to address that oversight by adding a modest amount that allows the organization, or the board, to begin work towards marketing the Renaissance Zone.
Alderman Wolski, would it be conceivable that within the economic development position that we are hiring, that that would fall within part of the job duties as his work through economic development within, I guess, the outlines of which he's being hired?
I don't recall if I saw that in the job description of that particular position, Mr. Mayor. At the same time, I don't feel like a staff position is directly responsible for the, that isn't answerable to that particular board in any way is the right way to do this. This board has a responsibility. It is outlined in the guiding document. I think it's a, like I said, I think it's a position, it's a responsibility that requires resources.
City Manager Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Wolski, I might have an easier way for you to get what you'd like out of this. We have spent considerable time talking with MADC as it relates to marketing and their requirements for marketing. One of the concerns that has been apparent to us over the years is a decrease in their marketing budget, so I would prefer to keep that intact if possible. I think we can get you what you're looking for in the city's component of the economic development allotment. Keep in mind, we were just talking about the $250,000 that was set up by the city council last year. Of that $250,000, roughly about $165,000 would need to be associated directly to the position, the Economic Development Specialist, now called Administrator Position, for salary and benefits, and that leaves the difference between that $165,000 and $250,000 for other operational activities. And if you so directed that staff member to associate those operational monies to marketing for the Renaissance Zone, I think you could get exactly where you wanted without having to make adjustments in the budget, just as an alternative.
Mr. Barry, I guess there are elements of that that I do follow, but I do want to make a correction in the sense, I feel like the assumption was that this particular $3,000 was coming from the MADC line. It was not. It was intended to be coming from the $122,330, which I think is essentially that extra economic development pot that you were just speaking of.
Sure.
So it's really just a matter of appropriating the dollars at this particular point, or appropriating that at another point through a council action at that time, as I see it.
Continue, Mr. Barry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The economic development dollars do go toward MADC, and they go to MADC in different components, some of it through contractual arrangements with MADC, some of it through marketing, and some of it to the Magic Fund, which they administer on the city's behalf, essentially. So I think we can get exact, I think the money's there. I think if you directed me, or the staff for that matter, to include as part of our activities Renaissance Zone Marketing, we could get you where you need to go without having to make any adjustments to the budget. But if you'd feel more comfortable to do that, I'm just posing that again as an alternative. Certainly, it is work that is germane to that particular line item and does afford us flexibility for the type of activities you're mentioning.
City Manager Barry, Alderman Wolski, I guess, rest of the staff as well. I look at this as, if we do take a look at that economic development budget that we have developed, that does include the activities of marketing within that allocation that exists within the budget. I would assume that would not only be the Renaissance Zone, but the Opportunity Zone that is also in the downtown, as well as the Pace Flex Program that we are going to be also working through and also collaborating with the Bank of North Dakota, MADC in circumstances. I think that that's where I'm looking at this, is that that already exists within that economic development budget, because it will be a component of the different tools in the toolbox that exists for the city.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that none of that's any different than it was last year, or the year before, or the year before. You know, this has always been an element of economic development. It simply hasn't been funded, it hasn't been prioritized. And so that's why I'm bringing it up here as a specific item, because I want it prioritized. I want it lined out. That's why it was offered as an amendment.
Further discussion. Alderman Olson.
My question would be for Alderman Wolski. Why $3,000? Is this based on a bid or a discussion related to marketing? Where did the number 3,000 come from?
Alderman Olson, it's a great question. It's come out of rough discussions at our meetings with the Renaissance Zone. There's an acknowledgement that we need to market the zone. We have projects taking place, getting underway even now, that we have individuals who are not aware that the zone exists, not aware that there are opportunities there, and we simply feel like we need resources to better spread the word. And so this was a number that, there hasn't been a formal motion or a formal request, but it has come up in general discussions, and this amount seemed like an appropriate and reasonable ask.
Further discussion. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Motion to amend includes taking $3,000 from the line of $122,300 from the transfer, I'm sorry, is that the economic development?
465.12-00, economic development.
Removing 3,000 into a separate line item specific to Renaissance Zone Marketing. Please call the roll.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padraig O'Leary?
No.
Straight?
Yes.
Motion fails. Further discussion on the motion before us on the 2020 budget. Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to just pull something for a discussion for you all. I meant to get it to you in writing this past week, but I failed because I left town to go and be with my mother, who was having surgery. So I just want to talk about page 14. I got it, I'm wrong. Hold on one second. Let me make sure I get my right page. And it has to do, and I wanted to notify the public, because you're all here tonight, and if you're not paying attention, you might not be aware, but there's a budget item, a line item, that we, as the city council, as your elected officials, will get a pay increase. And I want to bring it to your attention tonight. It's not an astronomical pay increase. We're still going to be the lowest-paid city council in the state, but I'm going to raise the issue in the next month, that the pay increase is going to go from 500 bucks to 1,000 bucks. And the reason I'm supporting it tonight, and I'm going to talk about it in the future, is I want to have a public discussion about term limits. And with my council members tonight, I just want you to think about it. I'm going to be promoting an idea that after two terms, regardless if you're a council member or the mayor, you have to step aside for a term. It's happening across the state in other areas, and I think it, in my eyes, it adds to building a little more public trust for this office and for the community, and it puts the onus on the taxpayer to be more involved. I know some people agree with term limits and don't, but I'm going to frame it out tonight under having the mass public here. It's something that's important to me, and I'll frame it out under, I'm not running next year in 2020. And I'm not running because I've served two terms. It's only been four terms, but it's as a result of our Make Minot campaign. I just think it's healthy for our democracy if we have people that will step up and get involved, and I don't think the current pay will allow that. So I just wanted to speak to that tonight, Mr. Mayor. I'm not asking for any change in the budget. I'm just pointing it out to the public in all transparency that I want to hear from them, because it matters to me, and I think we're all passionate about this community, and this is something that I think, I hope will, I'm certain it'll make it in the paper, and it'll spur some conversation, but I just wanted to be transparent with the public because it wasn't, and hasn't been brought up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Wolski. Very good point, or Straight, sorry.
That's all right. I understand.
Very good point. I think with that, also, I would look to our city manager, as we had discussed, as we were contemplating this, looking towards not only the next election cycle and looking for the perspectives of what we would anticipate folks that we would hope would step forward, but also within the surveys that were done. If you could, Mr. City Manager, just elaborate at a high level on the pay plan when it came to the elected leadership that has gone well more than a decade, or maybe even two, without addressing this.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council salaries were evaluated using the same methodology that the city employees' salaries are evaluated on a annual basis. Essentially, as you may recall, one-third of the city's positions are benchmarked against other cities and private sector positions, and so on and so forth. And all of that is described in our annual pay plan. And essentially, our attempt is to try to keep pace with salaries to ensure that we are competitive, so that we can remain fully employable, if you will. And the city council, in years and years and years past, has decided not to include their positions in that salary survey, and so they had not been included. When I looked at the data and found the excursion to be greater than 50%, I felt it was time to bring that to the city council's attention. There are a lot of sacrifices that you make as a city council, and in particular, now that we have a seven-member council instead of 15, there are even more duties that this council engages in, more meetings, and the like. So it felt appropriate to bring to your attention that there was a great disparity, in fact, the largest disparity of all the positions evaluated this year, and to make some adjustments. The council has been diligent about making sure that there was reason applied, that there was logic applied, and that certainly, that no one was profiting essentially from serving as an elected official. And we've been able to meet all of those goals, I believe. But the process is very, what I want to say, it's, the approach that was taken is a best management practice for evaluating positions, and that same practice was used for council members, as again, was used for city staff members. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
Alderman Straight.
Mr. Sitma, not to, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just for the public, we do not receive health benefits. This is just a pay increase that I hope will spur some folks to possibly run for city council. And in final, I mean absolutely no disrespect to my colleagues who have served multiple terms or have come back. It has absolutely nothing to do with you. It's just my own personal opinion, and something that was brought up during the Make Minot campaign, that folks have been waiting for us to talk about publicly. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Straight. And I'm sure we can further address these as the, exceptionally expound on this on social media later. So, further discussion. Alderman Wolski.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one more amendment to offer. This would be on page 20. I would move that we remove line 001-0600-491.34-12, as well as the line below that, that is the $750,000 from cash reserves and personnel savings, as well as cash reserves from recreation. Both of these are earmarked towards the City Hall retaining wall project. I would move that we remove those dollars from the 2020 budget.
We have a motion to remove three lines from the cash...
Two lines.
Two lines, I apologize. The two lines, cash reserve from personal savings from 2018 to City Hall and the cash reserves, recreation at the City Hall retaining wall, $749,042, and $925,949, which would essentially eliminate the retaining wall project that was approved a few meetings prior. Second. We have a second by Alderman Straight. Discussion.
Mayor Sitma.
Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. Obviously, this has been an ongoing discussion, and at our previous meetings, what we were really approving was more an aesthetic budget item. It was at that meeting that one of the many red flags came to my attention. The first one is the fact that we have some extraordinary rising costs on this project. The initial estimates were at 2.7 million, now we're at 4.7 million, and so that by itself gets my attention. Our consultants' comments on those increases, where time has passed, things, cost of things goes up, I can accept that. The cost of steel has been a significant factor in that increase in cost. That, to me, is a statement that suggests perhaps we need to evaluate options that do not include such dramatic amounts of steel. I would also share as another red flag on this particular project, that it seems to me that the intent of the city has been very clear from the beginning. I'm going to read a quote from the engineering report that was delivered to the city back in February of 2016. This is a letter from Braun Intertek, provided to KLJ, who is still today our consulting engineer. engineer on this project. At that time, the quote was, "We were informed that you plan to use a ready rock-type MSE wall system to replace the existing retaining walls. The following report provides our recommendations for retaining wall structure support and construction considerations for the project." To me, that's a very telling statement. It suggests that we did not carefully look at all the alternatives for securing the slope stability. We looked at alternatives for building a wall, and I think that's a wrong way to begin a project where cost savings and the best decisions for the city are important. As a result of not reviewing alternatives at that time, we have a number of alternatives today that have still not been fully vetted, and so I think it's appropriate to stop this project and go back and take a look at the different alternatives that may be available to us for replacing and dealing with the rock face and stabilizing the rock slope underneath, or excuse me, the slope underneath, which at this particular point is believed to be stable. So it's, so stabilizing is even a rough point. I'm also concerned about some statements that have been made regarding this particular project that I have found somewhat wanting for accuracy. At our August 19 meeting, Alderman Padraig Gula and some of his due diligence and research conversations with the consultant was told, and that information was subsequently shared with council, and I have no doubt was influential in forming some of our opinions, but we were told that there was a 25-to-30-year pay-for-itself advantage on this particular project, essentially that the wall would pay for itself in that period of time. I dug into that statement a little bit more. What I found was that the better math on that turns that number to about 39 years, best-case scenario. We also found that that assumption is that there is approximately $230,000 required to be spent every five years, for that assumption, for this pay-for-itself in 39-years assumption to hold true. So I went back and I requested the amount of money we have spent on this wall, and Mr. Lakefield tasked some folks in Public Works for coming up with that. We got some numbers back. Going back to 1992, there was an allocation of about $6,000. In 2004, there was an allocation of about $50,000, and I think in 2016 or 17, there was another approximate $5,000 allocation. We've been told that this wall is, if we replaced it with an in-kind surface, we would have to begin spending $230,000 a year, within approximately 10 years. But if we look at years 40 to roughly 65, we spent approximately $60,000 on maintaining the wall. So I'm just concerned that this particular project does not have a sound foundation of process underneath it, and I would like to slow it down. I would like to stop the design work. I would like to frankly hire Braun InterTech, our original geology consulting firm, to give us some estimates on alternatives. So that's why I proposed this motion, and we'll go from there.
Further discussion on the motion. Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't liked this project since the beginning, and it's not because I don't think it's going to be a necessary or a deferred maintenance project that we have to address. I just think the timing of it, if, you know, just to look at Mr. Enzling's comments from tonight, is sometimes we want things, but sometimes we can't pay for them, and this is one of those projects where I think that, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's necessary right now. I think we could slow it down. I think the money is, it's critical that we do these projects right, and that we have a little more trust from the public that we are spending their dollars correctly, and this is one where I think we're getting a very aesthetically, very expensive wall that we could pare way back and have something far less, and so that's why I'm going to support Alderman Wolski tonight.
Further discussion? For anyone at home, there's been more than three hours of debate in totality on this issue at great length. I don't agree with the statements that we can wait. This has been well more than a decade in the making, and we have heard that from more than one structural engineer at this point. We do have a future use for our City Hall, despite what some folks within the negatives within the community is that we would expect that our police department would utilize the space once vacated, and certainly the asset that exists here, and both at the Minot Auditorium, if we were to see a failure, which has also been a concern from the structural engineers. If anybody wants more of my comments, there's hours of it out there on YouTube. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor Sitma. I just have to kind of echo Mayor's comments. This is, this is the cost of doing business. This is, this is maintenance, same as we as citizens do in our homes, and the longer we wait, the more expensive it becomes. We've seen that through this budget, through City Engineer Lance Meyer telling us that we had a pie in the sky, just like with our budgets over the past couple of years. We were lying to ourselves about the cost of doing business. We were putting items into sales tax when very volatile funding sources, and we have an opportunity to step up to the plate and take care of our assets. These are our assets. So I can't support the amendment. I think it's, again, it's something that has to be taken care of sooner rather than later.
Further discussion. Alderman Padraig Gula.
I've been trying to bite my tongue because there'll be other things I want to weigh in on. I'm not going to support this amendment, but I think Josh is right in the sense of we limit ourselves, I think in this case, limited ourselves too early to a replacement wall. I think it's justified at this point. You know, maybe 20 years ago it wasn't, or 15, or five years ago. So I'm going to oppose the amendment, but I think he is right, and I think we need to take seriously what he says about not limiting ourselves and not automatically going to a repeat of what we've had. That part I agree with, and I agree with very strongly. So I just wanted to explain that, because I think the tendency is to kind of go with what we've had before, and technology changes. When I read the report from Mr. Antman, our former city engineer, from like, what, 30, 28 years ago, he mentioned a technology I wasn't even aware of. I don't know if it's even around anymore. Things change, and I think we need to be open-minded about that, particularly with all the changes in the world, with all the changes in our environment, you know, with increasing concern about various things. I like the idea, if it were feasible, which I don't think it is, but if it were feasible, I like the idea that natural grass is there. So, you know, I want to, although I will be voting against this, I wanted to second Josh's notion that we need to not limit ourselves, not restrict ourselves, and we're looking at significant expenditures and significant kind of improvements and things like that in the future.
Further discussion on the motion to amend.
Mr. Mayor, just to
Alderman Wolski.
briefly clarify my position. It is not my position that we should leave the wall unaddressed or unattended. There is a circumstance of deferred maintenance there that needs attention. I would remind the council that we already have a $1.4 million appropriation in the 2019 budget. Those dollars are being used to design right now. I think it's prudent to remove these dollars at this particular point, because that sends the message that we can send this back to fully evaluate the alternatives. My expectation is that it wouldn't take very long to explore those costs and bring us a report that puts all the options on the table and allows us to see and vet the project. If we got to the point there where the wall was by far the best option, this project would have my support, and I would even support it and offer it as a budget amendment at that time, but without that information to look at, and without that information to show the public, I can't support the project.
Alderman Wolski, we have done that once, already invoked it. Further discussion? Further discussion? Please call on the roll to, or on the vote to amend.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padraig Gula?
No.
Straight?
Yes. Motion fails. Further discussion on the motion before us for the 2020 budget. Any further discussion? Last time, further discussion? Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
No.
Sitma?
Yes.